This is part of the team, but we're happy to have you here. And it's been a long time coming since we had an 101 director. And we're super excited about the ideas you're going to bring to the county and how you're going to benefit all of our citizens. So we look forward to working with you. And if anything you need, these guys are like a family. So feel free, any of these department heads will be more than happy to help you in any way they can.
I appreciate that. Looking forward to working with everybody.
Good, very good. Okay, so I'll go ahead and get started. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Council Mesa.
Here.
Ms. French Code. From Malloy.
Here. Okay, as with all of our public workshops, we are being recorded. They're live for listeners to hear the business of the county that's going on. And if you are going to speak, by all means, feel free. But just make sure you say your name and title or identify who you are so listeners can follow along with who's doing the talking since they can't see us at this meeting. Okay, we'll start out with our regular agenda, which is for tomorrow. And number one, dispense with the reading in a minute. Number two, approve the bills. Number three, transfer monies. And we'll start out with the Health Department. They've got quite a few transfers.
Yes, they've got quite a... This is Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. These total 622,001.65. These are transfers for administrative cost reimbursement. So they get a grant and then they have to... They spend money and they have to move to funds to reimburse money that's been spent.
Okay.
Okay? So that's all of those are that. We actually... We have come up with a way to do this within... That we've been doing with sanitary so that we don't have to do a transfer of money. And it's more acceptable to the state auditor. And we're probably going to be implementing this. This happens quarterly. We're going to probably be implementing this hopefully before the next quarter. So you noticed on that those transfers of monies that were happening with sanitary no longer happen. It's because we improved that process to make it more acceptable to the state auditor. And we'll be doing it with this one too. You won't see this hopefully, I guess.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, number four, approve additional appropriations. And we'll start with the Commissioners' ARPA, 1,118,000.
Right. So that's the courthouse VAV boxes for 998, which you already approved. This is just putting that out there as an appropriation. This is page two of all the HVAC work at the courthouse. The 94,000 of it is for Bloomfield Township. 26,000 of it is for Johnson Township Fire Department. And those are two approved grants from the ARCA money. Adult probation is just increasing their telephone account. They have that money... They already had that revenue, which is why you don't see it reflected in the other... The revenue increases, the other ones you do. The... I want to make sure I do it in the order that you have it because it's different. Adult... Oh, Commissioners, adult probation. Use subsidy grant is the 73. That's just increasing it. And you'll see where it corresponds to revenue and the other... I think it's number five. Is it number five? No, yeah, in number five. We have two number fives. This is number six. Sorry. In number six, you see where it corresponds there. That's just increasing the revenue that they've received from... Because they received that for the use subsidy grant. Health Board actually has three, and those are different grants. The 550,000 is Public Health Workforce. The 61,444,000 is Get Vaccinated Ohio. And the 132,000 is Tobacco Use Prevention and Prevention.
Okay. Then on to number five.
The transfer, again, just remember, these are our money that's already been appropriated. It's within the fund, line item to line item, are these transfers. Let me make sure I have it the correct order for you guys. So the Children's Services is from workers' comp to other accounts, furniture and fixtures, childcare, travel and transportation. Just so you know, you'll probably see a lot of workers' comp transfers. That's because workers' comp has been paid for the year for all the departments. So when they are looking for money within the line item on their budget, they're going to pull it from workers' comp because they have it. They know they're not going to spend anymore. The Board of Elections is to fix an over-budget operation supplies to postage. That's the... Oh, and I'm not doing it in order. I'm sorry. That's the 10,000 one. I need to try... It would help if I had these in the right order, but it's okay. It's not anybody's fault. It happens that way. All right, let me go back up so we do it in the order that you have it. Neo cap is move extra from several different accounts to building repairs and maintenance to fix the roof. Domestic Relations Juvenile Court is seminars and training schools to operation supplies. The Dog Kennel is fix an over-budget operation supplies to office supplies for ink. I'm going to skip the sanitary engineer and let Bob handle that in a minute. The Planning Commission, there's a couple there that were like... There's $10 and there's 235. And those... The 235 is... Yes, it's to fix an over-budget accountant to dues. It's a reimbursement to the director for the Ohio Water Management dues. And then the $10, I believe, is to do... They did equip... Non-capital equipment and computer service for a new employee background check that they needed to do. Community Development is the 111. Again, Planning Commission Administrative Cost Reimbursement to Engineering. This is a change order for West Farmington Project that was previously approved by the Commissioners. Elections Board, I think I did already.
You did, yes.
Yeah. Furniture and Fixtures. And again, there's actually... There's several election boards. So the 559, just to make sure we get all of them. 559... Or 55529 is operation supplies to furniture and fixtures. The 3220 is again, operation... It's fixing over budget. I guess they had to do it. She did these at two different times. That's why they're listed differently. It's... That's also operation supplies to furniture and fixtures. The 51996 is operation supply to furniture and fixtures. The 10,000 was the one I already did, and that was operation supplies to postage. Clerk of Courts, the 140 is workers' comp to sheriff's fees, and that was for a new employee background check. And the $600 one was to fix an over-budget workers' comp to equipment maintenance.
Okay. And number six coincides with number four and five?
Yeah, with four.
Okay.
With four.
And Sanitary Engineers, you had one on there for $4,068?
Yeah, sorry. That's for Bob Meyer and our sanitary engineers. Our Fifth Avenue Pump Station Generator had some problems, so we had to ask some emergency work done on it, and we're transferring that from our vehicle maintenance line.
Okay, thank you. Number seven, authorize member of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to sign on behalf of Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services contracts per list dated August 2nd, 2023. Contracts create 23 training opportunities and nine job opportunities in a total cost of 204,339,026 funded through workforce innovation opportunity. No general revenue funds requested.
Yes, John Gargano, Trumbull County Job and Family Services. Those are normal contracts that we come to the board from time to time. And it's just what it says, there's training opportunities for those that have lost their jobs and also nine job opportunities that we're providing for these individuals. And it's at that total cost of 204,339,26. And that comes out of the Workforce Opportunity Act allocations. There's no general fund that is used.
Number eight, concur with Trumbull County Planning Commission, Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, and execute a resolution of support for West Warren Development, application to the Rural Industrial Park Loan Program for the development of areas located in Southwest Warren, commonly referred to as West Warren.
Sorry, I have my last meeting.
Thank you.
Sure. This is just a typical resolution for the board for development over West Warren. We've been working with the City of Warren for a while on getting this area rezoned for their comprehensive plan and the purpose, which is to facilitate development such as the... Nick has more details on this. I'm only here just to talk about...
This is the resolution for, and they do have a groundbreaking for this area also coming up, I believe, is on the 15th or something. So... Need to support this. Number nine, amend the personnel action taken by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners on July 6th, recorded in Journal Volume 156, page 25838, for the employment of Robert Perry for the position of custodian within sanitary engineer. The amendment is necessary to correct the pay range from three zero years to pay range three, three years due to the employees prior Trumbull County time of 3.3 years.
Commissioners, Bob Meyer and our sanitary engineers. This gentleman, Robert Perry, worked for Neo Cap for the county a couple of years ago. And in his interview, he had said he worked for Neo Cap. I just missed that it was actually a Trumbull County... It counted as Trumbull County time.
So he'll be paid retroactively back to the spay period you brought me with.
Correct.
Can I make sure it's all good? Okay, number 10, approve personnel action, the employment transfer of Robert Perry for the position. That's the personnel actions stating the same thing as what we amended up above. Number 11, oh, Sarah.
Oh, he's transferring.
No, so number 10 is Robert Perry, who we changed his rate of pay for the number nine. In number 10, he's moving from a custodian position on afternoon terms to a laborer position on day.
Gotcha.
Same pay range, just switching shifts.
Okay, not mistaken there? Okay.
And he was the only applicant from the county.
Okay, thank you. Number 11, approve change order number two with Pollard Land Service, Inc., 8150 Franklin Road, Girard, PA, for the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, number five, S13, in the amount of 183,040, revising the contract value to 2.8 million. The change order consists of the following: 28 additional service connections, repair of an unmarked water service connection that was damaged by the contractor, an increase in the cost to restore Weatherfield Township roadways within the project area due to damage by heavy equipment. Gary, you want to explain this a little better?
Yeah, Gary Newbrow, Trumbull County Sanitary Engineer. Commissioners, I've briefed you on this the last couple of times. And the change order is... The vast majority of it is per the request of the county, and that's why I'm recommending to do this.
You're right.
I've sent you some calculations showing that if we can get the service connections to these vacant properties, that we can actually drop the monthly capital charge by about $4 per month per household, resulting in a total savings to each property owner of over $1,300. I wish the property owner would have came forward a little bit earlier than this than us having to do this at the last minute. We could have built it into the project, but he came in late. And that's the bulk of the change orders, to get those service connections out to the vacant properties so that they can also contribute to the long-term project.
So those people will pay ultimately for it, but the people we've already serviced will get their bill lower.
Yes.
Because we are adding us.
Yes. Basically, it costs us less to put in the service connection than we will collect on that capital charge over the long term.
Okay, and for the record, we got about 20 pages of background information regarding this.
Yes.
That's available if anybody needs to see that. And very good.
It was also discussed at Wayne's last meeting, right, Gary?
Yes, yes. One part that we didn't discuss much was the improvement to the roads out there. Our contract included, when we build the sewer project, we do road cuts out there for the alongside service connections. If we have to put the sewer line down the middle of the road, we're only doing that strip in the center of the road. So for only an extra 17,878, we can just repave just about all the roads out there. The entire roads, instead of having this patchwork and repairs throughout the entire project.
And we already did some with the parking lots, right? Wasn't there something?
That was on the Mineral Ridge project.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a whole different project. But on this one, instead of having that patchwork repairs throughout the project area, like I said, we can do a two-inch asphalt overlay on just about all the roads out there. The few that we did not damage or did any work on, it's our understanding that Township is going to use our contractor to go in and fill in those other areas. So the end result of this project is not only going to be having a sanitary sewer in, but they're also going to have new repaved roads out there throughout the neighborhood.
Perfect.
So...
Can't complain about that.
Right, and we are well under budget, so the additional 17,878 from our end, I think it's well worth it.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
All right, and also, we want to increase the substantial completion date from August 5th to October 4th. We are having some supply chain problems out there with getting components for the pump station. And all the components are almost to site now, but anyway, there has been some delay due to supply chain. It's not costing us anything extra for this, so I also recommend that we extend the construction time.
Okay. Number 12, approve a school resource officer agreement by the Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Sheriff Paul Monroe, and the Bloomfield Mesopotamia Local School District Board of Education. This will be for the 2324 academic school year, and the amount of the contract is 63,578.58, due and payable at the end of the term of contract. Paula?
Paula Bovoda, Clerk. Tony cannot be here today, however, you've seen many of these agreements lately. I did ask him, I remember the prosecutor's office saying, if these agreements are the same as always, of course, we approve them. And I believe that the prosecutor's office was instrumental in creating these agreements. They are going to assist us with Job and Family Health support, hopefully, to do that. So I did ask Tony, you know, please let the board know I can't be here today. However, I did ask him, these were approved in the past, and the prosecutor's office would say it's almost the same, and they are, and they were instrumental in helping create this type of agreement. When I touched on that.
Cops and schools is never a bad thing. Number 13, authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners clerk to advertise for steel bids for the 2022 Bridge Rehab Program. The project consists of the purchase of steel for the superstructures for the Brookfield number 2B, Rockaway Sharon Road, Orangeville Village number 2, Hayes, Orangeville Road, and the Warren number 12 Kibler Tooth Bridges. No general funds required. Project being partially funded by Ohio Public Works Commission grant obtained through East State Regional Council of Governments. Further request to the county engineer.
Thank you, Commissioner Stephen Burberry with the Engineers Office. These were bubble projects from 2022, so we're asking Commissioners to advertise bids for these bridge kits. We'll be steel that being... Our intention right now is to, once the materials are fit and they're available, to do the work in-house on those bridges.
Okay, thank you. Paula?
Paula Bovoda, Plots 14, 15, and 15. Mr. Salamone is supposed to call in. I'm Miss Diane Sisk with Jokovic is here, but I just want to let you know, Commissioners, that Salamone does have a number.
Paula, hello?
Yes. So it's not going to be...
Hello.
There he is. There he is.
Mike Salamone, Trumbull County Transit. I've been on the phone listening, so thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Mike, let me go ahead and read. Let me go ahead and read it first.
Go right ahead.
Authorized Jenny Malloy, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign the 2025 Ohio Department of Transportation Application Certificate for the Ohio Department of Transportation 2025 5310 Grant Application. And to authorize Jenny Malloy, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign the 2025 Ohio Department of Transportation Office Authorizing Resolution for the Ohio Department of Transportation 5310 Grant Application. And to authorize Jenny Malloy, President of Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign the 2025 ODOT Local Match Certification for the Ohio Department of Transportation 2025 5310 Grant Application. And we have a packet here from you and Diane explaining as such, and it's about 30 or 40 pages long, it looks like. And what else do we need to know about this?
Okay, so what this is, this is the Ohio Department of Transportation 5310 Grant Application. It is due September 11th. The first one, the certificate that you're signing, is that you're signing that everything in the application is correct as far as you know, to your knowledge. Then the second one, with the resolution that you'll be signing, is the authorized resolution for the... Then the third one is to authorize... Oh, this is the local match. So the local match is coming from 100,000 some... I apologize, I can't remember how much is coming from Diane and Trumbull County Board of D.D. Way this works, though, this is 2025, and the way this is working is ODOT's year starts by first 2024. So you've already approved $100,000 for this. Those are the three agenda items for our... For the application. And so the application is complete. It's September 11th. The only thing we have to do is, once you sign the different certificates, I need to attach them on the application. That's about everything, unless Diane has anything to add.
If I could add, this is Diane Jokovic from the Senior Levy Administration. These three agenda items are just documents that, once you sign, they get attached to the application. We've given you a copy of the application. We've given you a copy of the prosecutor's office reviewing this language. And there's a long note on the last agenda item about the local match. You had approved local match for a two-year period. That was... Part of that was for this year that we're currently under, and the rest is for this new application that's going out. This says 2025 grant application. It starts July 20... Of 2024, ends in '25. So we're good with transportation through funding through '25. That's all I have.
Okay, and this, we did go chicken and the egg thing with this on who was signed and back when we did last year's grant, we did carry it over into this year. This is just being timely, following ODOT's guidelines. You've been... You guys have been in contact, had meetings with them, so we are exactly on time where we need to be with this one for this year.
We have, yes. This is just the application process and the documentation you need to sign to be attached to that application.
Right.
That then gets submitted on...
We were a little delayed last year, but this year, we're on track.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Mike, anything else we need to add to that?
Um, no. The only thing that's on the side once comes out will be the contract, which will be, I think, in May of next year.
Okay.
But I've got a timeline. Around May of next year, the contract will be coming out. Sign the contract, and that are, like we said, July 1st.
And these are guaranteed to the point of, as long as we do things correctly and follow the timelines and the guidelines, we can bank on this money being available.
Depending on who else requests funding, ODOT reviews all of these requests and determines what funding we will get. Last time, we were the only area, the only requesters for Trumbull County. Can't promise that for this year.
Yes. Commissioner, the way this works, this is 5310 grant. We don't even know how much exactly... I'm applying for 650,000. Last year, we received 556, I believe it was. So I'm applying for a little bit more. We won't know the exact dollar amount of 5310 until the actual information comes out from the federal government. Now, like Diane said, anybody in Trumbull County can apply for it. Last two times, we were the only ones that applied for it, we got the entire amount. So I'm applying for 650. I'm going high, but I've always been told to have a case of like, go high instead of going low because you can always come down, but you can't go up.
Okay. Okay, all I ask is just stay on it and let's try to avoid any issues that we had last year with delays and redoing things.
Yep.
And try to be rid of the money with it this year.
Yeah, no, we're in good shape right now.
We'll just be chasing you down to signatures.
That's right.
Okay.
Not a problem at all. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we have number 17, 18, is enter executive session, active executive session regarding disputes involving a public body subject to pending or imminent court action. We'll handle that tomorrow. And then number 19, restricted area resolution discussion by a township. Majority of the board will need to waive privilege on Mr. Toad's correspondence regarding the matter before discussion takes place. Now, this here is in regards to solar panels. And I would ask tomorrow that we do waive privilege.
Yes.
To be able to discuss this, which we need the majority of the board to do that. And we can start to get into this thing as we promised Mr. Peg before and other township officials. So that's okay, tomorrow?
Absolutely. And we have Julie Green here who can shed some light on this.
Okay, Julie. We requested a prosecutor's opinion. We did get one back, and apparently, it was routed over to you first and foremost. Mr. Peg got some questions here, so I'll invite you to be a part of the conversation with this too, Phil, because you seem to be the authority on it with the trustees. So I guess let's open this can of worms and talk about solar panels a little bit.
Phil, if you don't mind, we have a business meeting at the Golden Triangle at noon, and I have to get over there. I don't know how long we're going to discuss this, but before, first things first, I just did it yesterday. So I just wanted to mention that, you know, we've received a lot of requests from the township for zoning, zoning tax amendment reviews related to solar, subsequent to House Senate Bill 52 being passed in 2021 and House Bill 501 being in full effect in April of this year. And you're dealing with two different things. You're dealing with small solar facilities and large solar facilities. And what we've been explaining to the township is that they, while, of course, they have somewhat limited authority with the county commissioners' participation to limit the large solar facilities, really, the higher vice chairman only allows some authority to regulate small facilities under the zoning tax amendment. But I did want to explain the large solar facility. So that is defined in 30358, and then the definition for a large solar facility is in 490601 under the Power Sitting Board. Anything over 50 makes a lot for a solar facility. And there's a couple of different ways that the county can restrict that. They can designate areas restricted, which is what Phil is inquiring about for any corporate areas. But there's also a second mechanism for the county commissioners to regulate the utility scale large solar facilities, the county pre-application review of the proposed solar facility. So I did ask the subject matter experts at a recent workshop work for the Ohio State University, what the difference is. And they said that the first way, you're restricting it throughout the county from the beginning, which prohibits any developer from even making application to the Ohio Power Sitting Board. Second mechanism that's already in place under Ohio law allows the county to review and the township trustees to have received the pre-application and have a meeting where they decide whether or not to allow it. So you have two mechanisms to restrict it. One is never allowing anyone to make application for it. The other is to allow it to be viewed on a case-by-case basis. I asked them, well, what is the pro or con of, you know, having one over the other? And the response I received was, well, do the county commissioners really want to allow a developer to go all the way through the planning process and application process and then be told, no, we, you're not allowed to have it? So it would just cause a lot of, I would imagine, issues in that, if that were pursued.
Julie, and, and these, are we, are we treating wind and solar exactly the same in these, or are they separate?
Uh.
It seems like on the application itself in Vianna, wind and solar was incorporated into one. And in the prosecutor's opinion, and what I've seen here, um, they talk about large wind farms and solar facilities. So I guess they are kind of lumping them as one energy source together, one combined.
They have different thresholds, each one has a different definition on what's considered economically significant wind farm or a large, you know, wind farm versus a small one. The townships have the ability to regulate under, I believe, and I don't have the wind farm. I think it's, um, a large wind farm is regulated under, uh, 30357. It's considered a major utility facility. And economically significant wind farm is regulated at, or defined under 490613. And it's basically turbines associated with a single link interconnection to electrical grid. And I think they also have voltage associated.
So if I understand correctly, essentially, um, I guess when we first looked at this, we thought, well, the county commissioners have to impose this moratorium on all this stuff, else we have no power in this. But that's how, when the Ohio Powers, uh, Siding Board comes back and gives us the township and the county commissioners the chance to approve or disapprove, we still hold all the power.
And the township as well, so they're required to notify the township and the county.
And then it's up to the decision of the county commissioners, in conjunction with the township.
Correct. And just one more thing I wanted to add.
But I think that, so I think that was lost on a lot of this, is that, oh, we don't have any authority if we don't do this, if we don't oppose this, well, that's not the case.
Right.
And that would be on a case-by-case basis.
Assuming that action is taken in a timely manner, because you do, you are restricted to responding within a certain amount of time. Um, the other thing is, uh, because I've been working on this for eight years, joint land use study also, uh, it impacts this, this decision, especially at township level. They've been, all the townships have been asked to adopt the zoning amendments to, uh, further the, the sustainability of yards. And the joint land use study specifically states that they encourage, um, alternative energy and energy resiliency and, and, uh, allowing for different types of those developments.
As does a comprehensive plan from, uh, in different towns.
Correct. Um, but at, at the same time, the township has.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying.
I just wanted to mention it because the county commissioners have approved that in the past as being in support of it, uh, at the larger level, which, um, you know, I'm not saying we should advocate for allowing these or not regulating them. There are very specific zoning resolutions that take into account all the various criteria that should be included in a zoning resolution that would help to regulate, uh, these types of facilities, both at the small solar level and the large solar level. And I didn't really get into wind farms.
Well, I guess moving forward, and I see there's a attached Butler County resolution, what they did there. And on this read, it says, consider designating a restricted area in Butler County to include all unincorporated areas within, and lists a bunch of townships, uh, to prohibit the construction of an economically significant wind farm, a large wind farm and/or a large solar facility as defined in O R C 30358. I, I personally, um, kind of agree with what Butler County did here. And I think the main reasoning for me, Phil, I know you've got your reasons with it, but for me, is we are, you know, I have a wildlife background, as everybody knows. We're right in the heart of major migration corridor for migratory birds. Uh, we've got the largest population of eagles and, uh, second largest population of bald eagles in Ohio. We've got a huge population right now of, of hawks and, uh, ospreys and just, just migratory birds in general. I know right now, uh, Congressman Joyce is, uh, introducing a new bill to designating, uh, Trumbull County. Part of it is another migratory bird corridor. So I, I've, I've read the studies and I've seen things in other areas where wind farms have affected birds with, um, and a lot of bald eagles have died and stuff due to them. And at the same time, when I look at the, the solar part of it, um, we do have a lot of family farms here, we do have a lot of farming area, but again, we are a wildlife-rich area where we've coexisted with wildlife in this county between the number of land that we have locked up in wildlife areas and, and public use areas, Mosquito Lake. I, I personally, I guess, feel there are other energy sources more fitting for Trumbull County. Um, I guess Phil would like to hear your opinion on this. Go peg Vianna trustee.
There are places where they can be used. Um, there's a lot of places they can be used. One of the things I liked about the bills, including Senate Bill 52, was that, uh, township has the final choices. I'm speaking here today for Vianna Township. I'm not speaking for any of the other 23. There may be townships that want. I would think in the north, there's possibly places. Um, but for where we're at and the way the development is going, there's three problems. Two basics, which comes out of the Ohio Township Association. Is number one, property devaluation. Who's gonna want to build a house next to one? Then you got aesthetics, you already got a house there, well, they like to hum. With all the humming going on next door, and we're just talking solar here. Then you have the safety item. Imagine, okay, you've got a field of fifty acres, and you get a lightning strike in the middle of the field. And get to it the way they build these farms, just look at Kent State or look at Lordstown. You get a fire truck into the middle of that array, you're not, or watch it burn. Those are our biggest concerns. Um, but it just does not appear to be compatible with Vianna Township. And, um, we had not had an official meeting, which is great. The meeting that we had was when they voted on it, uh, talking the zoning commission. Um, that was advertised as our meeting, which I understand now is wrong. So we're gonna do it again, and this time we're gonna fix it. Um, but, uh, it's what we want here.
Well, can I clarify a few things?
Sure.
What you were presenting was, um, both small and large.
Right.
And so townships have the authority to regulate small solar facilities. And all of those items that you addressed are included as part of the zoning resolution. Restricting small solar site. Large solar site can only be regulated through the county commissioners. I just wanted to clarify that. And, um, I'm not advocating either way, I'm just explaining the process. I do believe that on, uh, that we should allow for small solar, but I understand that that is zoning, the zoning authority under the township. Um, but again, what we recommended in our response to last month was that it does not comport with your content of, and that would need to be amended just for own, you know, safety and the legal end of things. And it also doesn't, um, be conflicts with the joint land use. As just an example, uh, you, I think you stated that you wanted to restrict all small solar facilities from commercial facilities, which technically yards could be thrown into that category. And if yards needed to somehow install, uh, some sort of solar facility, and they may even have solar facilities already on site, um, that will add to their resiliency long term, then they would not be able to do that with that. And I understand all the concern you talked about with the large facilities. But again, the, the mechanism for that is either restriction outright or you have the ability to look at it on a case-by-case basis. So there's, I mean, it seems like a win-win situation. I, I don't see how, if you don't want it in a location, you can say, we don't want it here. And that's it. How, how siding board would say, you're done, you're not allowed to go. Unless it's through a referendum.
On our side, um, as far as I am, um, regulating those small, at least basically your home facilities, extent it's already regulated. If you plan to put solar panels on the roof of your home, you need a permit from the county. Because there are regulations, you can't put them any closer than ten feet from the edge of the roof. There's a whole series of regulations about that. Where, there comes the difference, not on the ground. Now there's no regular for it, zero. How far it's gonna be from your house, where you're gonna put your battery storage, because you're gonna have to have it. So there's a lot of things that aren't covered by Trumbull County building. And that's what we were trying to address. I can't speak for our zoning commission, but looking at that, what they gave us and speaking with individuals, we didn't want to take away anyone's rights. You have property, if you want to, uh, put those solar panels on the ground, they were so generous that they were offering up to two acres. Two acres, huge, uh, for nothing but solar panels. So I see their point, and it's something that we have to be careful of. We don't want to step on anyone's rights. Um, but two acres, that's more than enough to run a home, plus charge your electric vehicle and all the other stuff.
Well, you say you don't want to restrict property usage, but you are.
You are.
Commercial and industrial.
That's the very, that's what this is doing.
Right. On, on the large scale.
Well, you're doing it on the small scale too.
On the small scale, it's in your zoning tax amendments restricts commercial and industrial, solar for commercial and industrial.
That's exactly what your resolution is saying too, your proposed resolution is saying that, whether it be under fifty megawatts or over fifty megawatts, we're restricting. I'm just, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, that's talking out of both sides of your mouth.
Well, again, there's two sides to it. The home, the home business side, and then the large-scale fifty-megawatt side.
Well, I, I, again, I'm.
That's what they're looking at, trying to separate the two.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify with the township is, I, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you on the large side, because that is a huge amount of acres to dedicate to a solar facility. But on the small solar siding side, your, your proposal, or the, the zoning commission's proposal, was to restrict it completely by resident, uh, commercial-industrial use. What we said was, we don't agree with that. Number one was the J was, number two, your comprehensive plan. And number three, you specifically have said over the years that you would love more development in your area. And these alternative types of, um, energy are not going away. Uh, I think that that would be a restriction on future development.
Is there, is there a way we can do a hybrid with large facilities? And then the small facilities have to do a permit?
No.
Large facilities are all allowed in the bill.
The large facilities are regulated by the Ohio Power Siding Board. The county commissioners have the option, the townships don't have any authority over regulating those, uh, with regard to geographic restrictions. If the county decides to do that, of course, you would want to ask the township which geographies you want to restrict outright. But you have a, a similar alternative, which is if somebody makes a pre-application and says, hey, I want to build a hundred acre farm in Vianna Township, they go through the whole Ohio Power Siding Board process. They still have to come to you and to the township and say, can we build this year? They know, and it will not be built.
The, the only thing I worry about with that is, if we get that far in the process, then you have outside money, outside people, investors that could lease up some of our northern farms to put mega facilities, they go through the permit process, we deny it, and they've got a lot more money than the county does to fight it legally. And then we're in a battle later, wherever we're located in advance, we can maybe thwart some of that and let them go to a different county to fight the battle rather than coming here and say, we approve this one, but not this one.
I believe, I believe the process for, um, appealing that is through referendum by a vote. That is their only, I believe, I'm not a lawyer.
And the authority of the commissioners is very clear in that.
Yeah.
That they could either approve or deny.
Yes.
And, uh, that is occurring. Mostly in southwestern Ohio, but it is occurring.
What is occurring?
As, as far as them applying to get those applications from the board. Um, and then the board comes back and allows it.
The, the Ohio Power Siding Board without talking to the commissioner? No, I disagree with that.
That's, that's my understanding.
No, that's not what the Ohio law says.
The four counties, and I can give you the names of them, provide all of the powers going from those four counties are going to Cincinnati. And it, it's not that the commissioners, the commissioners are saying no. The board is saying yes.
So you're saying a lot, why would they provide, why would, why would the legislature provide that authority, the commissioners, to make it away from them?
It's happening.
Which township, which, which county?
Uh, I'm ready.
You can send it to me and I'll research and get it back to the commissioners. Some of them have the best information.
I'll get back to you.
And I said, that's, that's my concern, my worry is bigger money than what we have from outside to come in to lobby and baggage in the corner, we gotta legally defend it, um, should we get to the permit process like that.
Like I said, I've read this, and my understanding is it's only through referendum.
It's very clearly spelled out that over fifty megawatts constitutes a large.
Yeah, major utility facility.
Yes, and that, that would allow the board of county commissioners for you to approve that. Legally, they'd have a stand on, anybody can sue anybody, but today.
I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I play one on TV. I, I talked to many people about this, I'm just letting you know exactly what we have. I mean, it says, the county pre-application review of a proposed facility. Before applying or amending for a certificate to operate a utility facility from the Ohio Power Siding Board, a developer must hold a public meeting in each county where the facility would be located, at least ninety, but no more than three hundred days prior to applying for OPSB certificate. Must, must give written notice of the public meeting to the commissioners and the trustees at least fourteen days prior to the meeting. Must also submit written information about the type of facility, maximum capacity, map of its boundaries. And the cow, the county prohibited facility, Ohio Power Siding Board shall not approve the application. It's right here in a document prepared by an attorney, ex-subject matter expert from the Ohio State University. So I'm not saying I'm advocating for allowing this, I'm just stating that this, these are the facts.
That's it.
I, I personally, I, I don't see where we would sit this. I'm a big advocate for farmland preservation, personally. I'm a Farm Bureau member since nineteen eighty-four. I don't know that we, we have people waiting down the county doors to. I don't know that we, we have people waiting down the county doors to cite these things that will take hundreds of acres.
Do we have a resolution or anything that the Farm Bureau, the Stan's Farm Bureau has taken on these? Can you look that up for us?
This is the Ohio State University Extension Farm Bureau Office, Farm Office of OSU. So these are the entities that I would think this information, plus our researches reading Ohio. So, you know, I, I think that they have outlined the, you know, the process fairly well. And I, I just wanted to address your concerns, Commissioner, about, you know, potential kickback and the statement that the OPSB would just override the county. And I'm saying, based on what I have from subject matter experts, that's not the case. But when you have these pre-applications and they're presented to the board, you have the authority, the ability to say, we don't want it. And then they, they won't, they won't be here. So I just wanted to make sure that that was very clear. That there is, there is definitely two options. One is you restrict it outright, and we can help with designing a map for the best places to even consider those sort of restrictive boundaries, it doesn't have to be township-wide. We can look at, you know, different land uses where you want it specifically restricted for, and look at it on a case-by-case basis, which may require a little bit more work, but.
We have to choose between being proactive and reactive now, because we don't have an application, we don't have the interest, but we could at any time, you know, what's in the best interest of us laying out the rules beforehand in the game? Or waiting until it's, we have to address it because it's, it's on us? I, I'm more of thinking of being proactive in, like you said, establishing something similar to what Butler County did. Or at least we have some ground rules already here, so when someone does want to come to our county or lease up property in our county to turn in.
Does Butler County restrict it by township level, or do they have?
Yeah, just the unincorporated areas. And so the incorporated areas, the cities that they want to do it, city properties, brownfields, things like that in Butler, they can do it. But it's just the unincorporated areas that list the townships specifically where, where it's banned.
Right, and that's up to the commissioners, I was just clear, I was just trying to clarify the fact that you do have options and that you will not be overruled by the Ohio Power Board if you elect to look at.
And I'd be more of the inclined to city unincorporated areas also. If Niles had a brownfield area or Warren wanted to utilize some of their property for something like that, I personally have no problem with that in the incorporated areas where it's not the wilds or the wild areas or the, the traditional farmland-type areas, but, um, just my personal opinion.
The four counties were Claremont, Brown, Butler, and Hyland.
Were they were overruled by the Ohio Power Siting Board?
They're being overruled by. There were other cases, because I've, you know, I've been watching this closely, where it depends when the solar companies actually put the application into the board.
Right.
If by the true anything happening, the board is almost always ruling with the solar company. In other words.
When you say anything happening, are you talking about the enactment of House Bill 501 and the effective date?
I'm talking currently. Currently, if, if the solar company puts in the application today, then the county comes back and says, no, we don't want it, even the township, no, we don't want it. They have in several cases approved those applications.
Effective date of this law is effective April of twenty twenty three. That's House Bill 501. Senate Bill fifty-two went into effect in November twenty twenty one. Okay, so for, you're saying that anything, any application that was submitted after November twenty twenty one, if the commissioners took no action, that they would then be subject to overruling by the Ohio Public.
By the board.
I, I don't know, I don't believe that's correct. I asked these questions at the zoning workshop, and it's my understanding that maybe there restricted area boundaries that would apply. But you have that, they are still required to have the public hearing and go through that process. And at that time, the commissioners currently have the power to say, we. Do you agree with that, Phil?
Most of it, yes.
Most of it? Which part don't you agree with?
Again, the boards have been over, overruled by objection. And that's what scares me.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to see, but.
I'm going to send you this one shortly.
Marla, what's your thoughts on moving forward with something like this? Is something we should have a hearing on with the public, is there something we should discuss further amongst us? Julie, you have any input on this?
I think that the commissioners' will is to restrict it by a geographic area, that you absolutely should include all of the affected townships. And to do a land use analysis of where you want it. So you can either restrict it wholly, which may or may not be the will of the people, or look at a land use map and say, here are the best places to where you could potentially. And, and we've already brought up before about not wanting to take away people's rights on how they use their lands. I hear that a lot with MCR's request. I think that this would fall into that same category. Again, I'm not a big proponent of these large facilities, but I am a proponent of having all the input and understanding what you're doing and their geographically, these should be restricted. I'm sure there are spots in our county where it could, they could be located after a land use has been analyzed, but that would require some work on our part. And then you would, it's, take it from me, I've been working on this YARs coordinated effort for eight years, and I'm still not through all of the public meetings to explain all the joint land use recommendations, the zoning text amendments, and the Congress. There's twenty-six affected communities in that MCOV. And it's, you know, to coordinate twenty-four townships and get everybody's thoughts and input, that's going to require a lengthy public process. It's not something that can be done overnight.
But it's probably the most prudent thing to do.
Oh, absolutely.
Because without making a, you know, resolution, you, you could be looking at parts of, even Phil mentioned, that there could be parts of this county where it could be beneficial.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I'm not saying there are, but I don't know that.
Right.
You know what I mean, so, so.
I, again, I would just rather be proactive than reactive. Because the first time we get someone decides they want to put one in green on the north end of Mosquito Lake or something. Then we've got the battle that's brought to us, and then we have to justify in a little different manner when we're facing a potential multimillion-dollar corporation that wants to do it, that's saying, we want to do this, and then we have to sound reactive to it on whether, or discriminatory in any way that, uh, once there is a player in the game with us. You know, I would rather make the rules of the game before we know who's playing it.
These are process, I recommend a land use analysis of the whole.
I think that would be why.
Yes, but you know our work program and.
I know.
And the length of time that that will take.
I do understand that, but at the same time, I, I think that we need to be prudent before we make decisions.
Absolutely.
Martha Yoder, auditor, and also kind of speaking as a former township trustee. Um, can this be, does that, if we do, like a, I, I don't want to say blanket, but if you do a land use study, and, um, can that be done in sections and that, those resolutions by the, the commissioners be done in sections? And so, you know, when we're talking instead of the whole county at once? And, and in particular, it's really obvious that, you know, Vianna wants that. But rather than do the resolution for, you just do that for Vianna for now.
Right.
So that they are, you know, and then work on doing that.
The geographic restriction, um, authority for the commissioners have, I can't answer that, that sounds like a legal question.
Yeah.
I would imagine they could amend that geographic restriction area, but I don't want to say for sure.
And, and I mean. That. Yeah, and that's, I think that would be a, a good question to have answered.
Yeah.
Because if you could do it in part, it wouldn't take as long to get things done, right?
Well, and.
And those who really, really want it right now would be, they could go ahead and proceed.
Right.
And then work our way through the county on the rest of it.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, um, again, the other part of this, when I say talking as a former trustee, I think it's really important that, yes, we do the land use, but we also make sure we know what the will of each of those areas is.
Yeah, it sounds like Vianna Township wouldn't require that, it sounds as, that's what I mean, so he would like the entire township restricted. So that would be a simple, uh, resolution if, if it was.
If it's legally viable.
If it, yeah, if the commissioners, prosecutors office agree to that, I don't see any issue.
And, and I would, you know, just, I, I wouldn't say that, I want to be careful in saying that we wouldn't necessarily want to kick the can down the road for the rest of the, of the county, but we would want to, we don't want to do something that affects the whole county.
Right.
Just for Vianna.
Right.
And I think it's, you know, it's important to be looking at, because every township in this, we have very diverse county, people don't realize that.
Yeah, right, right.
You know, and it's, what, what works for Vianna may not work for Farmington or Good Davis or Green.
Right, right.
So we need to look at that.
We just actually got a zoning text amendment, which from, uh, testing the same, so I know that they do want to restrict.
Right.
Large solar, and we explained to them that it's not under their authority, so.
So I think this is the, the path forward, in my opinion. The, the board, um, until that land use study is completed, and I know that's going to take some time, but until that's really completed, if anything does come to us as far as from the Power Siting Board, we would reject, because we don't have the input. Say yes or no at this time. Once that land use study is done, and I'm, these are all hypotheticals.
No, I know.
Because nothing has come to us yet. But if it were to come, I think that would be the prudent thing to do. Once the land use study's done and we, we can delineate exactly if there are any places we can do this, then that changes everything. Until then, we can't make that determination.
And we also have ARC GIS, one, two, three. Zoning inspectors. Have to each county. Possible, but that's just your zoning. Also sent out. Township that has zoning, which there's. Also have zoning.
Thank you.
And so, uh, we can work on that initially.
Do we know that the Trumbull Township Association is taking a stance as far as their group besides Vianna?
They have no, um, and I, I think it's the same as us, well, it'll work in some places, in other places it will not work.
But do we know, Phil, and Julie, do we know that we can say, if Vianna Township approached the commissioners and just said they want it just for Vianna Township, can we do it just solely for one township?
That's what I was recommending.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I am, that's the.
Can we get a prosecutor's opinion on that, maybe see if that's something that we can feasibly do? I mean, that, that way we can tailor make it to whatever township we're talking about.
Right, and it, and it, it might, it seems like it might be a little bit more work, and, but I think, you know, if you've got somebody that's asking for it, and it's feasible to do it for that person who's asking for it, I think, or that township that's asking for it. To me, that makes a lot of sense. And, and then also just make it a priority to be working towards figuring out what we want to do with the rest of the county.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
There is, uh, we see that. Township it is. Their neighbors in talks with a solar company that, uh, wants to put panels on a couple of farms in their township. And the farmers are opposed, or they don't want to lose any more farmland. And wanted to know from me, Marla, what do you do? Well, it's really quite simple, especially. Do it to your trustees, and you say, look, the county's going to allow this to happen, um, we can't vote for you anymore. That's the simplest way, because you're right, the solar company will be throwing a lot of money into it. Especially once they have contracts with those farms. And if there's nothing in place prior to. Again, I know you disagree with me, but I've seen articles, and again, I'm just going from articles, um, that the board has allowed it in certain areas.
Ohio Power Siting Board.
Even with the objection of the commissioners and the trustees, because the application was filed prior to them rejecting.
We do have.
Well, you're saying they missed the deadline for a review of the pre-application, are you saying that they?
I'm saying that the solar company.
Yeah, I'll look into that, I'll look into that. I, I imagine that there's more to the story, there always is. But it's my understanding that based on my law, the commissioners can geographically restrict it, which, you know, that's, if that's the township's will for Vianna for large solar, then that is obviously under your authority. And, but the commissioners also have the option of looking at it on a case-by-case basis, and we discuss, you know, the what, the pros and cons for that. But you mentioned, does the Ohio Township Association have any, um, comments on, on large or small? I know on the small solar facilities, they created a template. For small solar, which is what we recommended the Vianna Township adopt.
And, and I would like to see, I know the Farm Bureau has their annual meeting coming up for Trumbull County, uh, I think it's in August?
No, September thirteenth.
September? And I would like to call Mandy too and ask her to put that on the agenda, to poll their local membership there, to maybe bring to a vote that night on how the Trumbull Farm Bureau feels on that. And they, they do have a lot of the mega farmers that are members, that are active in that group. And I'd like to see their opinion too, from the big farmers, on what they think about it through a resolution. Maybe from their local, from the Farm Bureau.
Yeah, it's September thirteenth, um, the other, um, I, I just did a real brief search to see if the Farm Bureau has had an opinion, you know, the, the organization itself statewide. And all I can find when I just do a little search is, they have lots of informational meetings. They don't seem to have any kind of opinion that they stated. So if I were you, I, I would recommend the commissioners, uh, touch base with Mandy to just to see locally.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to call her when we get out of here.
And, uh, she can also, not just locally for Trumbull, but see where the region is heading. Because she, she doesn't just oversee Trumbull, it's Ashtrula Lake Tiaga.
We can send out the survey, so the question we'll pose to as many officials as we can, we have a pretty large list serve is, the commissioners. Graphic boundaries of where large solar facilities. The problem is that many of the townships don't understand the difference. That's not a criticism, it's hard to keep up with all of these different terms and definitions. So we'll try to be as explanatory as possible, but we can get their feedback and hopefully return it to you. And then we can talk about doing, if they're not opposed to it wholly, then we can look at those townships where they would like a land use. Where they would like to restrict. Because there's, you know, obviously you want to protect your culturally significant sites, your sites where you have, um, protected wildlife habitat. Something that we would look at and take into consideration.
I think we beat that horse enough. Let's, uh, move on to some other things. Uh, one thing I had was, um, there was an inquiry to, from, um, Commissioner Frenchco to the prosecutor regarding the Health Department, if they bought the building in Portland, the bank building, would the county be responsible for maintenance of it? Um, the prosecutor said if a member of the Board of Health and a commissioner requested it, they would gladly give an opinion. But since they represent both of us, they would not give an opinion unless there's requested by both entities. I, I called over to, um, Dr. Migliozzi, and he said, the moot point, if they buy it, they'll maintain it, the county will have. The county will have no involvement in it all, so we don't even have to address that." Uh, as a, as commissioners, that they said if they buy the building, it'll be their building, their maintenance, their problem, their issue, and we, we don't need to involve the board of commissioners for it, so check that one out.
Yeah, essentially it would be a board of commissioners' building, so it would maintain.
Right. Um, I got a inquiry today and a couple weeks ago from Lordstown. And, uh, what they are questioning is the, uh, the price that was there being charged for indigent, um, representation. Uh, we, we had a, uh, resolution that we did that showed what all the different entities paid uh, for representation for, um, public defenders. And Lordstown, um, is paying twenty-one, a hundred and fifty dollars, but City of Cortland, McDonald, Gerard, um, Hubbard are all paying like five hundred dollars. And they wanted to know why they were paying more than, than they all were. They said they had less cases from what they believed, and they wanted to know why their fee was higher. Paul?
Paul, over the vote of clock's curve, I believe, am I correct to say Mr. Blank?
Yes.
Mr. Blank.
Go by.
I spoke with Mr. Blank, and I, uh, forwarded his request to Laura Brzowski from the Public Defender's Office. Did give me a printout that I gave him, so, uh, wanted to, have to discuss it with her. We'd have to amend the journal action to be up to the board, but she did show how many times they used the services. So, I, I don't have the authority to amend anything, but I think that maybe, uh, could ask Ms. Laura to come to a workshop next week perhaps, and maybe even Mr. Blank as well. It's up to the majority of the boards, but we did try to reach out and do our part to help.
Let's have them both come in.
That way-
And I did, I, I did say you need to-
Sure.
Get with her and get with them.
Sure.
Um, it's probably something that was negotiated. He said he doesn't remember any negotiations in his thirty-three years there dealing with that office. It was always a resolution from us, but-
It is, it is a resolution from us, but we do depend on the numbers and the figures. I didn't set the numbers. I just, I know they were raised maybe, I don't know, six or seven years ago, I'm guessing. But it's just, um, I think City Warren, they may pay quarterly, like, I think a total of fifty. It's a very high amount. City Warren pays a really high amount, um, believe me. And, uh, some that don't utilize it at all pay a very small amount. It's just a reimbursement for us. But I think the way we could solve that is, uh, we would have to be up to the board if they wanted to amend that, if they saw that they weren't using it, or next year to make it lower. And they also, um, villages, they don't have to participate in use of services, I don't believe. But we wanna do, I wanna do my best to help you all make, everybody, but I have to-
Yeah, Warren pays fifty thousand. I'm kinda guessing that, uh, Lordstown cases go to Warren Court, and maybe Warren Court's higher than Gerard Municipal Court or the county court system, so maybe, maybe that had something to do with it. But we'll, we'll ask Laura to get with him and see if we can facilitate that and see if they can come up with an agreement. I mean, I'm not talking that much, twenty-one hundred versus five hundred, but-
But, but, yeah, he, I'll have them both come, so, um, to a public meeting so they can discuss it, unless you have a different way?
No, that sounds good.
You want me to have it at the workshop?
Nope, that sounds good. I'm, I'm good. Mara's good with that too.
Okay.
And next thing I had is I got a call from, um, Jerry Altobelli, and he wanted to talk about letter of credit versus a bond issue on some of their, um, developments with the county engineer's office, with drainage districts. They've gone to bank letter of credit in lieu of bond. He said, uh, he wanted me to get with our sanitary engineer to get your opinion, um, and to get the opinion of the prosecutor. He said if they were able to use bank letters of credit, which he believed are easier to collect on even than a bond would be, should they, should the need arise, then they can utilize that money they're putting into a bond to further their development to build houses quicker and build more houses. So he asked if, if the board of commissioners could get involved to discuss that with the sanitary engineer on, on the availability of some of the developers using the, uh, bank letter of credit versus a bond.
Uh, Gary Newbrock, Trumbull County Sanitary Engineer. Uh, Mr. Altobelli, he did bring this subject up to me also, and I discussed it with members of my staff that work on the, the private extensions. That's where normally we have the-
Correct.
Those are the situations where this is applicable. And they gave me justifications as to why we wanna stick with the maintenance bond. I don't have them right now, uh, but I could, you know, ask them about that, you know, in the deeper depth and get some sort of letter of bond.
If you can do that, then I can meet with you regarding that.
And justifying why we wanna stay with the maintenance bond.
Right. We want, I know we want development in the county. We have a housing shortage in the county, um, which is clearly evident. And if the engineer's office is doing it with drainage districts, let's, let's compare and contrast and see what the difference would be there. And if there's a way to work with developers to make it easier if, if, if it's proper and we're not gonna get burned on.
Okay, all right. Um, one, one of the things I can say is that we've been using maintenance bonds on the private extensions now for fifty years, and no other developer has ever, ever even brought this issue up. You said it's one developer that's having a, a, an issue with it, so.
I think he just comes down to math dollars and cents of, they're investing so much in these bonds that, uh, that that money can be freed up, further their growth as they hit a, a housing crisis, how they call it.
It is not, it is not a lot of money, Commissioner, from a developer's standpoint.
Yeah.
Gary, can I add something?
Yes.
This just arose because of a-
Julie Green.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning. So this topic arose initially because, um, when it came time to, um, to collect the maintenance bond that's required through our subdivision regulations, um, they claimed that it was difficult for a developer to give the bond, which is what our subdivision regulation requires. And so alternatively, the county sanitary engineer's office, through your subdivision agreement, got the maintenance bond from the, the developer's contractor, which has no contract with the county. Um, so because the developer is coming to us to create the subdivision of land that's major division, our subdivision regulation states that the bond must be in the name of the developer. And so, uh, because that was difficult for them to secure it, they said, "Can we, uh, can we provide a revocable letter of credit?" And so our subdivision regulations allow for that, and so that's why we accepted that. And I think the issue was that Mr. Altobelli had to provide a revocable letter of credit to us, which we put on, and then they also-
Which we did accept, I believe.
And then they also require a separate maintenance bond from the county.
I, Commissioner, I'll let you know, I, I have staff that handles this thing with me.
Sure, I understand.
I, I am not that-
I wanna put you in miller with it, or I might have made something wrong here. Right.
No, I, I just think it's a matter of, of cost.
Okay.
Of having to provide both. And what I had said to Mr. Altobelli was, "When we get to the subdivision regulation updates, we can consult with our county, um, that's something that has to be in there with our county legal county." But I think it is. I think that they, they want to have the developer the one that is holding that bond, because it's a contractor who we don't have an agreement with. Don't have a performance bond in place or maintenance bond.
Well, Gary, let's look into this then, maybe over the next week, and see if we can come to a good, solid answer or see if there's any leeway in there to make it easier for development.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Martha Yoder?
Um-
Then we'll get to you next, sir.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Um, we had talked last week about the Italian Fest.
Yes.
And I, um, went ahead and we've actually done, uh, gotten a space as well as a tent through, uh, the Italian Fest, through the auditor's office. The auditors, we're gonna take care of that. But I do need to have, um, some discussions with folks from your office as to who's gonna be there and when, that kinda stuff. So I kinda need maybe a contact person who's gonna handle you guys' end of it. Um, we don't have to staff the whole time, but it is Thursday, the tenth, four to eleven, and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday, um, eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, eleven to eleven. So we need to kind of, we talked about maybe having different offices there at different times, and I need to have somebody help me with that as far as coordinating it. Um, I, like I said, we got a space and a tent. I'm not really sure what the size is on that, so I'm gonna call Mr. Dando. All of that was mailed out though, like, Friday, so they should've received it hopefully by now. But I'll call and follow up with him, but if you could maybe let me know who in the commissioner's office I need to be talking to on, and kinda coordinating this, I would be, that would be very helpful.
Paul, do you have a recommendation?
Uh, for, yeah, I do not.
Yeah.
(laugh)
We'll look and see who handles our booths.
Somebody, yeah.
It's the last one. They decorated it up really nicely.
Yeah, and we, yeah, we all wanna work together, but I just, I need kinda have like one person. And, um, I know Alex did a little bit with us with the fair, and maybe we can kinda all work together on that. But I, um, I know that you're, and this is coming up next week. Um, so I, I know that your vision was to maybe have different people from different departments, and so we kinda need to move on that if we're going to. And the only other thing I had for the commissioners is just that, to let you know that, um, I'll be meeting along with Alex, um, with, um, our new nine-one-one director today, as well as members of our IT, a member of our IT department and accounting, so that we can help her get up to speed on where her department stands. Thanks.
Thank you, Martha. Alex?
I, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir, but I just wanna piggyback on that because we would have to make some decisions the board would. Um, if you do want to have, uh, people allocated to work these, you know, shifts, we did make a resolution the last time for the Italian Fest where we specifically approved the comp time. I think it would be who of us to do that again, if that's gonna be the case. Or maybe a blanket statement that the board approves comp time for, you know, fairs in general, festivals, whatever, or you wanna continue to do it on a case by case basis. I understand that too. Um, but with that being said, what is the schedule again, real quick?
And it's, we don't have to staff the whole schedule, all right?
Yeah, I would say beyond nine o'clock would be, I don't want that on my boys there after dark.
I'm just trying to get an idea so I can present the board with how much comp time we're potentially looking at, so that way you can make an informed decision on what you wanna do.
Okay. Um, setup is actually next Wednesday at six, and we can handle that, I think, from our office unless somebody wants to help us with that. Um, but it, I think it's going to be fairly simple. We're not gonna do quite as extensive as we did for that day.
They already have the set up on board here.
Yeah, all we're gonna do is tables and getting everything kinda, making it look nice. We might decorate a little bit, but I don't know that we'll go as extensive.
And it's, it's right outside there, and even that would feel hard if we can have, moving some of the boxes up downstairs and that.
That would be, yeah.
Can you possibly assist in that?
Um, so it's Thursday, and their hours are, again, four to eleven. We're not necessarily going to do it the whole time. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it's eleven to eleven. Um, we also need to do the tear down, but that's Monday. We can kind of coordinate anything. We just have to have it done by one P.M. So if I need help, I can grab Dell, but, uh, um, you know, to move stuff back here if we need to and put stuff in my van, whatever. Yeah. We'll talk.
I also, I'm sorry, Alex Stephen Johnson-Bush, last thing. It's, it's who of us to plan this in advance? Because we also have to let anybody know who's gonna potentially be working comp time next week, that they're not entitled to any vacation or sick time in that week. So if they already have that plan, then they negate the comp time. So we do wanna make sure that we're being fair to employees and asking them and letting them know in advance, so that way we're not hurting anybody, uh, telling them that they're gonna go work the booth, but then not give the comp time because they already had pre-vacation planned or sick time for next week. So we need to get this done ASAP, if that's what the board wants to do.
Yeah, and that, that delves into something even bigger, yeah.
Yep.
You know, when I first came in there, I talked to you about this stupid rule, I'll call it, that if you, if you're sick or you take vacation even an hour and leave early-
Yep.
Then it negates any overtime or comp time you have for that week. Well, I guess it would be-
Just in, uh, twenty-four ninety-three, ju- just in the me-too clause for all non, non-bargaining. So, uh, JFS, they have different, you know, their comp time's different, uh, so on and so forth. But for some odd reason in our personnel policy, yes, it is, if, it's vacation, if you take vacation or sick. Um, like I said, there are entities within the county where you can take vacation and still get comp time.
And I, and that's the direction I would like to go, as Commissioner. I think, I believe that's fair. Uh, I believe that's fair that if someone's using time that's theirs, and they end up working overtime, or they end up working longer in that week or more hours, they're not entitled to comp time above and beyond. Um, they're penalized. You know, if they take, go to a doctor's appointment that week, or they're penalized if they, you know, even leaving an hour early and they still put in a forty-six hour work week or whatever after that. I don't like that. I don't know, Mara, what your thoughts are on that?
Yeah, that's what we can do. I don't know. I'll, I'll, I'll hand it around.
So, just to clarify that, Martha Yoder, Auditor's Office, um, coming from private sector, it's a little different. Uh, we don't do, we're not allowed to do, we're not legally allowed to do comp time-
Correct.
-in private sector. Um, so it negates any comp time or just, yeah, that is a little- because in, in, again, in my world, if I had somebody who had vacation time-
Right.
Say they took twenty hours of vacation time and then they worked, um-
Twenty.
Uh, twenty hours, that, or, or twenty-four.
They worked four hours in that week.
Right. Then it wasn't, you know, but if, or if, it's, better example. Um, they worked forty-six hour, they had forty-six hours total, but maybe two of that they took as personal time. They would still get those four hours as overtime and time and a half. So I would count the, the number of hours-
Right.
-that they actually worked-
Correct.
-to get the overtime.
It's, that's, you're not wrong, but it's a, in the contract language, that's where our problems are.
Oh, it's the contract language.
Vacation doesn't count as time worked, or sick doesn't count as time worked. That's where, it's not, it's not the philosophy, it's what's currently in everybody's different contracts-
Right.
-that really limits me as an H.R. director-
Right, gotcha.
-to be able to change policies.
Gotcha.
Like, I need to be able to look at that and change it holistically at one time. However, half of those things are contractually agreed upon, or half of those things are followed as a me-too clause because it's twenty-four ninety-three, but we all fall under twenty-four ninety-three, but then we don't. We kinda fall into the personnel policy. So it's, it's a little bit of a mess right now, and we're working on that through policies and procedures. But I'm also gonna be working on that through contracts too. So I'm trying to do this all at one time, slowly but surely, and we just started our contract negotiations.
Well, Alex, I think our first step on this is to figure out when we wanna man it.
Yeah.
And you and I can talk later.
Yeah.
And, and what, what will work? I mean, I can do a lot of time, but I know that we wanted to spread it out-
Yeah.
-among different departments, so, um, we'll talk at some point today.
Okay.
Like I said, we served over a thousand people at the fair, and we were able to, to-
Sure, and we wanna make sure we do that with this. We wanna, we may not equal that, but we certainly wanna be out there. I've got things I wanna talk to people about. I want my staff to talk to people about, and I wanna make sure we cover that, but I also want it to be, um, you guys were kind enough to, um, let me piggyback during the fair, so I wanna make sure you guys have folks there too. And other people, if we need to.
Do you have any departments that think they would wanna volunteer their time, or not volunteer, but work a shift at the fair during the workday?
Participate.
Or participate at the, from the eleven maybe to four-thirty shift, have any of their staff or employees be there to represent their department with outreach? I know you're kinda busy, Diane. What about your assistant that you have there?
Uh, I was, Diane Djakovik, I, I could reach out to my council members to see if anyone's interested in, in-
Oh, yeah.
-helping. That would be helpful. For senior.
Yeah, that's really nice. That's actually very good.
And just to talk about the levy, that would in, in particular would be great.
We have our banner that you can set up if you want. We have the giveaways from the fairs, the brochures from the fair, our banner. I can ask any of the council members if they want to go. Uh, Thursday is my husband's birthday. He would shoot me if I'm gonna be at the-
No, we won't.
(laugh) Well, he may not. Maybe he wants to eat there, I don't know. And then we're going Friday through Sunday. We're out of town for a wedding. I just-
I can, I can reach out to Bronn and see if he-
Well, not a doubt. I'm sorry.
At least maybe has the same perm, veteran service.
Yes.
That would probably be a really-
Be a real good veteran perm to have.
Yeah, I'll reach out to her.
Let's do that, and let's also reach out to, um, uh, Geogre Trumbull Solid Waste and see if they may, I remember a couple of years ago, that's where I got the idea, is I remember the booth. And I remember the Green Team owner was there in the booth, not only there, but at the sports show they had at the Expo Center that year, um, where they had a space and a vision, and that's where I learned about, uh, Geogre Trumbull Solid Waste, was at the sports show- at the sports show at the Expo, because there were people there from that, so I know past boards have approved that.
And, and that is one agency and one department, where we could use the outreach. Because a lot of people don't realize the building is even there, and we've put a lot of money in the marketing, we've sent out mailers, we've done all, everything we can do, whatever we can do to get out in the community and re, people recognize that, look, we offer this service, a lot of people ask about it, but they're not aware, so this is a good thing.
Right, so, Alexander, do you think, just a consensus, since we've done it, and we've already set the precedent, maybe two of us agreeing today for comp time was right, or do you think a resolution is in order for something like this, actually for us to vote on tomorrow regarding that? I think we've already kind of set an administrat, that's an administrative decision
I agree that it's an administrative decision. I just wanna make sure that you guys, I'm just saying that, that we were all on the public record, so when it happens, then, yeah.
And, and just like when we sign up on comp, if someone works over at home or whatever,
Yeah, I mean.
that, that I think, you know, I, I would like to see
I think that there's been a.
some people sign up for it from our department also, for some of the shifts, Martha, you can keep the master sheet of
Sure.
who's working and when.
Sure.
Get to us by the end of the week, and then circulate it amongst our department here. We'll see if people wanna sign up for the open shifts, and then that's something that tomorrow and I can decide, uh, you know, even next Tuesday, you know, we can, we can decide to approve it in advance for them.
Sure. Yeah, and I just wanna end with a.
After we know who's doing when, who's filling in, so.
Right, okay.
Let's get them to sign up by next Tuesday, then we get a group.
And we'll make sure folks understand. Like I said, I just need a, a contact person for you guys. Let me know.
Yeah. Julie, well Julie, can I, can I, I know you have, oh, you have a meeting, go ahead.
I just wanna correct an error that I made. I admit my mistakes, and I'm wrong. So, uh, I was reading this incorrectly and interpreting it incorrectly. I know it sounded like I knew what I was talking about, but actually I don't, so.
(laughing)
So, but I admit my mistakes, so, with that being said, Phil is correct. Uh, if the county prohibits the facility geographically, then the county's planning board shall not approve the application. If the county limits land for the facility or takes no action, then they may proceed to O P S V. And then the county and the townships are part of the official review process, and during that time, they can say, yes, it's approved, or no, it's not approved. And I was just reading through a couple of cases where, you know, they, they lived different people voting for and against, or it's a split decision, or they approved it, and sometimes they deny it, so it is a more arbitrary process. I wanted to.
So what was the first part of what you said, if the county did what?
If, if you, if we, if you prohibit it outright through your geographic restrictions, at that time, O P S V cannot approve it.
Okay, so we don't have a rule out there prohibiting it, then they can get involved?
I apologize for reading.
But if we do proactively prohibit it, they don't have that? That adds.
That's good to know.
Yeah, very much. Thanks, Julie. Don't do it again.
We, we also, real quick, uh, before I forget, we have, uh, some board members, uh, for the Mental Health and Recovery Board. Yes. Um, I've looked them over. I know my candidates that I'd like to put on. There's two candidates, I believe, so, um, like to move on those where possible. Just for full transparency on that.
I, I talked to April yesterday at length. There is one candidate I'd like to move forward. She said that the positions are open still. Um, there is not a deadline on these. There's one candidate I'd like to move forward and then promote, that we still have a position open on the Mental Health and Recovery Board, and, uh, see if we get a few more applicants in that are in the field that have maybe better experience, or, uh, you know, with the three applicants here for two positions, I'd like to see a few more applicants, and a few more that have professional time in grade dealing with mental health and recovery. Uh, as big of a problem it is now, I want, see if we get the best of the best as if we can. And, and I think we, we can use a few more applicants to, to round that board out a little bit.
How long was it advertised for?
I don't know, and I don't know if it was advertised at all that I saw. I know it had to have been somewhere, but I, I didn't see any advertising myself, and April said there is no deadline for the advertisement. These are filling positions that, where people died or resigned, so it wasn't like it was an application period for that.
Well, there's, there's one, there's one position where the person on the board is reapplying.
Correct, but they can't be reappointed by who appointed them last time, because there's a, there was a, a law, a rule that the way he was appointed last time, they can't reappoint that same person again. So now, that one can be a board-appointed person, but it can't be fitting in the categories of who's put on there from what entity, that same entity can't put that person back on again.
There are two board appointments that the board needs to make, that the Board of Commissioners needs to make.
Correct. There are two, there are two that are open now, that are partial terms.
Three applicants in your folder, and there's two open positions that will be appointed by Board of Commissioners. Yes, sir, and it does say in one of her emails, uh, excuse me, Paul LaVota, Clark Clark, please see the attached advertisement for board members. Um, three members termed off, um, she's actively seeking applicants. I would just need you, I mean, apparently if you guys want somebody on, just tell me.
And these are, like I said, they are, they're both partial terms. One replaced Judah Tolles, who passed away, and one replaced Jane Botwell, who resigned. So, um, they are partials. When their term is up, they're gonna have to reappoint again through the regular process. So being that they're partials, there wasn't a deadline to have your applications in by a certain timeframe. So that's why she said she can still take applications now. Um, and we may wanna promote better that these positions are open, because they didn't go through the traditional, this term's up, so we promote so many days in advance, we open it up to the public to know. I would like to promote it through today and promote it at tomorrow's meeting, that we are looking for board members, um, and we are actively seeking applicants at this time for that.
That's fine.
Before we just pick two, because there are people out there that may not know about this yet, and I, I fear that we're just gonna pick someone
I, I figured it was everything that I didn't know.
It'll be viewed as, well, we picked two people and that's it. I don't want, I don't want that perception.
Sure.
So maybe we hold off on all of it this time?
That's fine.
Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Let's do that.
Do it as transparently as we can.
All right, let's, let's do that then. Let's, let's make it known that the Mental Health Board and Recovery is looking for two applications to fill a partial term. Um, if anyone out there from the public wants to apply, they would apply through April Caraway. And, uh, we can have more information on that tomorrow, that we can talk about at the end of the meeting tomorrow. Paula?
There's an application, uh, that they would have to, to get, and I, I could send it to them, uh, blank, and then Ms. Caraway does need to, to look at it and make sure they fit certain criteria, and she would let the board know that she does for the board members, that they re, that they meet all the criteria.
Alex?
I'm sorry, maybe I missed this. Alex Stephen Johnson Bush, Human Resources, do we not, did she, maybe she did, did we ask her if she already advertised?
She did. Her email, what I read says that she did advertise, but it's no immediate.
I guess that's what I'm, I don't mean that, I'm just saying, it sounds like we've already, from what I had listened to in the past, it sounds like she had already put out.
And these are three applicants that meet the criteria for the application.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure that, it, I'm, I have no stake in this game, but on behalf of April, I wouldn't wanna re-advertise something that we've already advertised.
Well, it sounds like.
But I could be incorrect.
Sounds like she did advertise, but it sounds like what from Mister Malloy said, that she's favorable to have more time to seek more.
There, that we have more time, there isn't a deadline on that, and maybe we promote that it's out there from the commissioners. She may have advertised to various sources. I still think this is a very, very important board, especially with the pending opiate lawsuits and stuff, and the money that could come in on this thing. You know, we're gonna need a board that's the most professional use, because there could be a major, major chunk of money that they'll have to oversee and work with. And I, I think we really, really need to have the best candidates we can have for this that have mental health and addiction experience
Sure.
to provide the best service. And, and not that these people don't have it all, I'd like to see a little bigger pool from it, to see if we can maybe flush out a few more, um, with a little more experience in it.
And that's, that's the nice one it is.
And that's why, delaying a week or whatever, it doesn't hurt her, doesn't hurt them from every quorum, it does not prevent them from doing anything that they do at this time. Uh, we got this gentleman back here that has been waiting patiently, so if I can go to him first. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. Uh, my name is Mariano Longo. I'm the president of the nonprofit Downbeat Musical Arts Center. Uh, we're trying to open our location at eleven seventy one East Market Street. I just, uh, have an update for the commissioners today. Uh, three or four months ago, I had flown in from Las Vegas and attended one of these, uh, workshops. And, uh, we discussed my application for art, art funds, and you recommended that I go, uh, to the city of Warren with the request, because our building is within the Warren City limits. So the update is, I did do that. Uh, upon your recommendation, I went right to the mayor's office and talked to Mayor Franklin. Uh, he wrote a letter to the commissioners saying that they would match funds, uh, for a to, our total grant application, which is approximately sixty thousand dollars. They would match funds for approximately thirty thousand. So I drilled down on that, uh, and he referred me to Fourth Ward Councilman Jim Schaefer, uh, because my building is in the Fourth Ward. Uh, the mayor came to our building, Councilman Schaefer came to our building and has seen the progress that was halted by the pandemic. Uh, so Councilman Schaefer has approved the thirty thousand dollar matching funds. Uh, I filled out, uh, a vendor's, uh, form. I've gotten a unique entity I D. number and submitted those to, uh, Vinnie Flask. Uh, I believe it's, he's a city auditor.
Yeah.
So I just wanna let you know, I've done every bit of diligence that I can to provide and bring the number I'm requesting from the commissioners down to thirty thousand dollars instead of sixty. So, uh, my understanding is that our grant application is in the portal for legal approval, and, uh, obviously I'm waiting like an expectant father for, uh, uh, any word, positive or negative, so I know how to proceed and, and what to tell the contractor. So thank you for your attention.
Mr. Saki, where do we stand with that? That was one of the ones we moved forward, that she, isn't one that she left on hold? I understand that, but, but before we got to that point, is that one of the ones that she has already?
That's one of the eighteen to twenty we submitted, and those were paused.
Okay, so it wasn't one that she ruled on already that we didn't act on, it's, which is one that she does have, like she hasn't ruled on yet?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
And, and, and there is no, uh, idea of, of how long that pause is, or?
It's not gonna be very long, and I, I tell you, last week we had a, a little bit of an issue with this. We sat down after the meeting, um, Auditor Yoder and Alexandra and myself, and relooked at some of the figures you had there, and we were able to come up with a little bit more money than, than what we had addressed at the meeting.
Right, well, we, we explained, we explained, it's unfortunate it came out like it did.
Right, and, but, and we found even since that week, even more money that is, is coming back to us.
And we wanna.
So, but the pot keeps growing bigger every day?
But we, we wanna make sure that everything is exactly correct. We don't wanna speak too soon on some of this.
Right.
Uh, Mister Saki and I have put in a lot of time, both individually and together, to work on this, and we've also worked with Shara, and, uh, we'll, we'll be spending some more time later this week. I'm coming back early from a trip, so we can devote some more time to it. And, um, we hope to buy next workshop, next week,
Next Tuesday.
have something for you. I'm saying hope, because it is a lot of work, and we wanna make sure everything's right. We're trying to tighten up numbers, meaning that we have numbers on that sheet that are soft.
Right, soft.
And we're trying to make sure that we can get them a little harder. We still are probably not gonna be able to give you one solid number of what we haven't committed to, simply because there's always going to be some softness there.
Right.
Right? So you're gonna get a range, I think, when we're done, and I think Mister Saki agrees with that. Um, but we have to work with, like, several different entities to kind of solidify some of these things and see exactly where some of these projects are. Um, we've done a, we've done a lot of work though already, um, both of us have, individually and together. But we really do, we need to meet with people, um, we need to talk with sanitary especially, to make sure all their numbers are exactly where they're supposed to be, um, with building, because there's a lot of those projects that are out there, and, um, with Julie too, to try to get more solid numbers on, especially those big ones. Uh, but we are, you know, working hard on it. It's, the thing that people don't understand when they go, oh, how hard could this be, right? Is, we've had several moving targets, not just one moving target, more than one, right? You get moving targets as far as how much something is gonna cost, and what we've, we've tried to commit, um, and the previous board as well as this board has tried to commit in a conservative way, so that we don't come up short on certain projects, right, that are really important. We also have the moving target of federal regulations, right? Things that, um, Attorney Rogers disapproved initially for one category are now, oh, they fit in that category. So we have all of these moving targets, and it's really hard, not to mention you've got different people, we've got things in different stages. We just hit on that, right? Where is this in the pipeline, right? All of that stuff makes those, you know, and people saying, you have a spreadsheet. Now, we have like seven. (laughing) And trying to reconcile those with each other. So it's, it's, yeah, it sounds like, oh, this should be take, this is like an, an hour job. We've probably, between the two of us, spent about twenty, I think,
Oh, easily, yeah.
easily in this past week, and that's when you realize that we have other parts to our job.
Well, I guess, I guess what I can say then to that is, Mister Longo's, Commissioner Cannon-Lace and I made a commitment to you. We didn't send you on a wild goose chase for nothing. We told you to go to Warren. If they come up with half, we would come up with half. Uh, I'm gonna back that up on my end as commissioner, as I, I imagine, Mar, it will. Once we get the, the wheels moving again, which could be as early as after next Tuesday, with a minimal thirty thousand dollar grant that you're asking for, you know, I, I would say that we would move that one along quicker than anything else.
My, my purpose here was not to press in to say, you know, where's the money. My purpose was to update you on my progress with the city.
And, and we appreciate that, and we appreciate the work you've done doing that, and we appreciate the communication you've had with us, letting us know, I'm doing this, I'm doing this, is there anything else I need to do?
Okay.
But you've been, you've been most communicative to, to us, and, you know, I, I know our mouths wrote a checker bodies are gonna cash away when it comes to that. You know, we, we just didn't send you on a goose chase for nothing on that.
Thank, thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you. And, and with that too, you know, we, we made some commitments. We had some public meetings with people. You know, I don't want anyone by any means to realize, um, or, or think in any way, shape, or form, any money disappeared. No money disappeared anywhere. It's all been spent on great projects. And we made commitments that the townships are gonna be taken care of. We're not backing down on that commitment at all. We made commission, uh, commitments on how important broadband is to the future of this county. We're not gonna back down on a broadband commitment. Um, we do have a lot of people asking for a lot of good stuff, and even if we had fifteen million still sitting there, we still have more requests than what we have money.
Absolutely.
So we are gonna have to pick and choose the best projects that fit the best needs of the citizens. It, but for the townships out there that are inquiring, and I've heard from all of them in the last week, you know, your stuff didn't get scrapped in favor of things that were done before. They're still there. Even Commissioner Frenchco, um, you know, agreed, you know, she wanted half of what was left to go to the townships, at that time, seven million. I said seven and a half. I think we're up, getting close to that number again, and, and I think before it's all said and done, we're gonna be elevated above that with available funds to spend through the county when we get some of the money back from things like wean building and things like that, that are much higher projections than what it looks like it's actually gonna cost us. So there is no panic button, there is no, you know, fear of broke or anything like that. With that said also, with all our department heads we have here, is, you know, I've been here seven months, and I think I've worked with the department heads extremely well, and I'm gonna ask at this time, as we get to the second half of the year, um, that we all finish strong together as far as our budgets. And we have this little art by hiccup, which is, we're gonna get over that, and we're gonna, we're gonna spend a lot of money on a lot of good projects coming up. But at the same time, I'd ask each department head to look within your own budget to make sure we stay on course. But at the same time, I'd ask each department head to look within your own budget to make sure we stay on course. Um, so at the end of the year, we don't have a budgetary thing with our regular budget where the budget projections were off in a major way. I don't want any department heads thinking, well, we're cruising good. We could spend more here and more here and the commissioners won't see it. You know, work with us on that to make sure we all stay in the same direction with the same goal, to hit the budget as we proposed and planned at the beginning of the year. So if that means tightening up the belt a little bit before the end of the year or making sure you're monitor, monitoring your budget. Um, Arthur's doing a great job and she's going to find every dollar that's out there, but she can't create more dollars than what we have. This is something that, uh, I ask all the department heads to make sure we, we buckle down and, and stay within budget the best we can as we get into the second half of the year.
The only thing I want to add, because I don't want to talk too much about, um, my recommendations as far as the ARPA stuff. We'll get into that next week. But, um, and I was actually going to wait till next week to say this, but because you talked about public perception, there's a lot of chatter out there that money's been spent without a proper process and that is completely false.
Not one dollar, not one dollar.
Not one penny has been spent without the proper, we have purchase orders, we have bu, we have resolutions, we have all of that. We have legal opinions. We have everything. Not only that, and it's something I wasn't even completely aware of because I've kind of let Mr. Saki handle all of this and I haven't really gotten into it as much as maybe I, maybe even I should have. But is that we also have reports that have to be filed quarterly with the federal government. Nobody is, nobody, I had, I had people texting me last week, well, well, where do you keep this money?
There was, there was some-
Like, it's a stack of bills in my office.
There was some bad media reporting not coming from the Tribune. I'll make it clear. Tribune hit the nail on the head pretty good that there was some media reports, some people that weren't in this room.
Right, absolutely.
That may have read a little bit of this and then they speculate and they heard rumors.
Social media, yeah, socially, right.
And then all of a sudden, we're broke. We don't know, we're, we're, we're missing fifteen million dollars. It's hiding, like you said, hiding underneath Martha's bed.
And a, a lot of what we were talking about last week had to do with commitments, not money spent.
Right.
Right? And there's, there's a difference there. When they talk about moving targets, that's part of it, right? And, and so every single penny that's been spent has been spent with a paper trail. There is a paper trail for every single penny.
And I would say every penny that was spent, even before me, is a good project. We're not criticizing any of the projects that we did.
Right, right.
They're all needed. And I wish we had a hundred and fifty million dollars of spending there, ARPA money. And we would still find good causes that need it beyond that. And the grants that came in are, are fantastic. The township people and the city people worked really hard and the nonprofits. We're not going to take any of them lightly. I think what's going to happen is when we get these numbers from you, we're going to bring out that big stack again of ARPA stuff. And then we're going to rate, we're going to rank, we're going to separate.
That's exactly what you need to do. That's one of my recommendations.
We're as fair as we can with it. And, you know, the entities will not be forgotten. Nonprofits will not be treated any less than the township. Will not be treated any less than a governmental entity that's needing the funds. But we are going to make sure that the pie gets split up as equitably as possible amongst the whole community. And not all into one area, not, you know, all into a certain sector. We're going to make sure everybody gets a piece of the pie.
One of the suggestions, and we were just going to, I don't know if maybe Mr. Saki's already reached out, is to have, um, a map of where the water and sewer projects that are part of ARPA are. So that will help.
Yeah, I already made one.
Okay, that's great. Because that, I think, will be very helpful for you guys when you're looking at what, what areas have been covered and influenced by the ARPA money. These projects that are part of sanitary are, first of all, they're a big part of what we've sent, are what we've spent.
As, as will broadband be and as, as will planning commissioners, definitely, same.
So, so, and, and I'm not saying that the individual projects aren't important. They are. I live in a township. I know, you know. But we have to look at how, what's best for the whole entire county. And if you guys look at other projects, look at that map, look at where the other projects you've already funded are and say, oh, where are we, where are we empty? And kind of look at those, that as a rank. Um, I said I wasn't going to give my advice today and I've sat and done it. I'm sorry.
So, so we can get a fire truck, but we're still going to make sure we take care of the township the best way that we can. And we're going to spread the money money equally and fairly to all of them. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Hart?
Commissioners Bill Hart, Towne County Maintenance. Um, please, this is a proposed or architect's service of the ARPA RFQ for my other two big projects, the stone building and the high range more crew. Um, Mr. Saxon is going to charge five hundred dollars to, to the RFQ proposals that you would just need to advertise. And when they come back, this service would, um, took the qualified architect engineers to move forward. So I give Auditor Yoder a, a more tighter number that we have to get for the projects that need to be done. These are the two big ones. So I talked to the prosecutor. Uh, he said he's fine. There's nothing legal in this document, any weans. But it's up to the board to accept the, the, uh, contract or the proposal.
Really going to five hundred bucks a piece on the engineer's garage and the stone building?
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
So next week I'm going to have something I'm intending to hire Mr. Saxon.
Yeah.
That's your copy, that's your copy. These are different, they're, they're different buildings. They're highlighted.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, yes, very, yes.
That's fine, that's fine.
Steve Gerber with the Engineers Office, just to kind of piggyback on what Mr. Hart just said. Um, I know he's aware, I don't know if the commissioners are aware, but the insurance carrier closed down our Portland garage. So we're not able to use that facility at any, any time, any longer. It's, it's safe. Roof's fallen in. It's, it's closed. Um, there is a news story on that today. So you're aware how important that, that facility is for us.
Thank you, Steve.
Another copy. Okay, I'll just give this when you want to anyone.
Uh, Gary Newbrow, uh, sanitary engineer. Uh, just a reminder, Thursday night, we have the public hearing for the Elm Road, uh, water project.
Yes, that's, uh, is that a township, at the, is that a township admin building?
At seven P.
Seven PM, public is invited for that. And we'll be discussing the water line, the rates involving that water line.
Yeah, the, the assessment that they require a public hearing before we can move forward with an assessment project.
Yeah, so we invite the public to come and give us their views regarding that. And I've had, surprisingly, already both ways, I've been chewing on my phone.
I, I've gotten phone calls too, yes.
It'll be interesting to see. This is my first public roasting and I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Uh, one, one other, uh-
Well, that's good.
Yeah, one other thing I thought I'd bring your attention. This is bad news. Uh, Newton Falls increased their water rate, uh, twenty-six percent for the bulk of water. I mean, it just came at random. I didn't know until this morning. My water superintendent, Ron Watson, brought it to me. And, and when they increase their inside rate, we get hit with it also. So we pay the inside rate plus forty percent to Newton Falls. Our July bill, it would have been thirty-one thousand three hundred. It went up to thirty-nine thousand five hundred. So an extra eight thousand a month there to supply that blueprint project. And seventy-five thousand a year just for bulk water. Just thought I'd make you aware of that, that we are under pressure, uh, in our water districts. We combined it, but it's sort of death by a thousand cuts here when it comes to the, the water district. How price everything keeps going up.
We just told Newton Falls by giving them nine hundred thousand dollars to tie in projects in their community and they raised the water rate.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Anyone else have anything for the greater good?
Uh, I just wanted to let everybody know, Alexander Jim Johnson, Bush, Human Resources Department. Um, there's going to be a lot of Corsa trainings that are going to be coming out. I sent out the first one. I know they're far away. I get it. Everyone's saying, well, this is until November. Please mark it on your calendar. The more, I cannot stress it enough, the more participation we get, the better chance we have at, at salvaging, to be quite frank, our relationship with Corsa and/or potentially getting any discounts, which is probably going to be very little. So I really, if I can mandate it, if the commissioners are okay with that, I, I'm asking that everybody, there's a representative from each department, um, including those that aren't necessarily under the commissioners entity. That includes Board of Health, that includes the Board of Elections, that includes all of the areas that I touch as HR. We really need your participation, um, defensive driving. Uh, I know that Randy Smith took up some opportunities to take those classes. Thank you. I, anything you can help with with Corsa, please reach out to me, even if you just want a training for your specific, uh, entity. I will do that for you, whatever we can. But we, we, we really need to, um, take advantage of their, their training. They're free to us and they're great training. And then we in turn get discounts, so.
Those in-person trainings that we're going to be doing, um, I assume you maybe want to try to do what we did before. With, and are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, if they're, if they're okay with it, yeah, a lot.
Okay. Um, we're hoping to have, um, we're trying to move that multimedia position through as quickly as we can. Um, and that will be something that that person will be helping with. We're talking about, uh, broadcasting and basically to the county so that, to the, to the-
Everybody doesn't have to come here.
So that we don't have to have a-
Yeah, it's Martha Yoder, auditor, talking about broadcasting to the county.
Yeah, um, so that like when we have a training, say we have it in here like we did with the, um, uh, records retention, we were able to broadcast that out to everybody's offices. They could, you know, watch it at their desks. And so we didn't have to have, um, two hundred people in here. We could just, we, that way more people could do it. Um, so we're going to get permission, make sure we can do that through Corsa so that we don't have to have everybody right on site, um, and also maybe seek permission about recording to see if we can do that. So, because if we can record and they can, uh, go on the internet and, or go on, uh, a YouTube channel that maybe would be a, a more secure channel, a private one for the county employees. And then they can maybe watch later. So we can get more participation.
Do we, um, one other thing that, that I was brought up? Your probationary period's over. We discussed that. Is there something we need to act on that? Is there something where we need to have executive session regarding that? Or is there something that, that we need to, to do, I guess, in regards to finalizing employment?
I mean, like, I'm, I'm, I'm here to stay now, I think, right? I mean, I think, no, um, yeah, I, I think, I mean, if we're still revisiting the salary issue, we can, we can do that in executive session. Yes, I would prefer to do that in, in executive session. I don't want to go through. Um, I think I provided the commissioners with, I don't really feel comfortable going into everybody's salaries at the table, even though it's public information. I don't think that's fair to everybody here. And I'm not going to compare myself to others. So I think that that should be something that we talk about, um, in executive session.
Paula?
Paula Volboda, clot clerk. The board would like to act on that executive session tomorrow. Just let me know. So, um, Alex can get the proper, uh, section of it. We do, how, already have one executive session, but it's totally up to you, um, whatever board wants to do on that.
You have a problem with that, Mar? I'd like to hear out of what, of, I know there's been things she's presented and I'd like to have an opportunity to, to dispel that out to us. And it's worth it here.
Sure.
And let's do that. It'll be good.
Sure. Uh, Ms. Alex, would you be able to get this to me?
Sure.
Proper section and I'll get that on.
And put that at the end?
Yes, sir.
But yes, as far as my probationary period goes, that's already, I mean, here staying now, so.
Would it just be the board and Ms. Stevens Dussey for executive session or?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Um, tomorrow, I have a conflicted meetings tomorrow where there is a, uh, Trumbull Giaga policy meeting, I believe it is. And I have to be at the planning commission for a, uh, valuation of Julie Green and, uh, position description. I don't think it was that meeting.
Oh, okay, that was a different meeting.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was a different one.
Okay, this is a policy board meeting?
Of, of some sort, yeah.
Policy meeting tomorrow at one o'clock.
Can you attend that if I, if I go to the planning commission?
It's at one o'clock. I, I resent it to you.
Yeah, let me look at it. I got a little problem.
Okay. Just want to make sure they have coverage from one of us.
Don't think there was anything else conflicting.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second that. Thank you all for coming. Stacy. Good luck.
You have a similar one before we're back. Uh, Auditor Yoder.
Sorry.
Yep.